Not residential, commercial, industrial, open space. And personal property should be taxed with one rate for all property classes. Or to use different tax rates for different classes of property. The hearing will include the presentation by the town assessor and board of assessors. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the board of selectmen shall determine whether or not one tax rate shall be applied for the fiscal year twenty twenty five tax rate. Uh currently, the town taxes at a single tax rate for all property classes. In addition, the board of selectmen will determine whether or not to allow exemptions for small commercial businesses. And owner occupied residential properties. All concerned taxpayers are encouraged to attend to present their views orally or in writing. So that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. Um I have presented to the board um. The motions for this evening and the first thing that I'm going to at least start is the introduction. And this year, um our single family. Home has gone up by about four percent from last year. And the average assessment is one million thirty seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Which would equate to a tax bill equaling nine thousand four hundred ninety two dollars and thirty four cents. So it's about a four um for four hundred and five dollars of an increase over last year's. Tax bill if you are interested in that. Um what you're going to be voting on is the residential factor. This factor of one means all classes of property will be taxed at the same tax rate. So we have the various classes of residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Traditionally, you've always adopted a factor of one. Do you have any questions concerning that?
Not here.
I do not.
No, but the residential exemption is 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 something that you can vote on, which can be granted. So that resident owners pay less taxes than non-owner occupied residents. Right now, our community makes up fifteen percent of non-owner occupied pres- residences. Eighty-five percent of our community is made up of owner occupied. And so traditionally, you have um voted not to grant this exemption because of those ratios. Okay? The small commercial exemption. The uh commercial class that makes up this portion is one point two percent of all the properties. Of the commercial class. And in total, the industrial and personal property class make up only two point six percent. So traditionally, you also have voted not to grant this particular exemption. Due to the small percentage that would benefit from this particular exemption. Any questions on that? No, good. This one was a big one last year, the senior means tested exemption. Um there were communities, and it's taken me all year, but communities that had s- special state legislative acts. That allowed the communities to grant the senior means tested exemption. So that's why it was part of our LA five options. And I did not know enough about it um myself last year, other than I knew some communities did offer that to their residents. And the the HERO Act that the governor just signed last month is part of this. So that um I will put forward an article for the annual town meeting. To um for the citizens to vote on whether or not um you can or can. Have the choice to vote for a senior means tested exemption then next year's tax classification hearing. And so at the annual town meeting, meeting, we can discuss the eligibility requirements. Or if you have questions now, I do have some answers on that. And I know you did Jean last year.
I do have a question Sheila. In in the notes here, it says a hundred and ten residences received the D O R circuit break credit in twenty twenty one. So is that a hundred and ten residences in Nahat?
Yes, in Nahat, and they would be probably ones, well, they would be the only ones eligible. For the senior means tested exemption.
Okay, and um what what triggers that D O R circuit break?
Yeah, um when you file your taxes, state and federal. One of the schedules in our state um tax form is called the schedule C B, which stands for circuit breaker. And it is a special exemption for seniors only. And so there's requirements through the state, and so that's what they would have to bring into the community into Nahat. If they've received it, then they have to complete an application if they want an exemption. You know, sometime for um their tax bills for fiscal year twenty six, say, for the first time. Um that's the standard. They'd have to um have um been um approved by the Department of Revenue and received a circuit breaker credit.
Hmm okay, and uh one last question, um. Is the is the exemption a percent exemption?
You'd have that choice of a percent or a flat amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
Presumably, the the percent in the case of communities that have this is something less than a hundred percent.
Um well, I believe that Concord this year is making some uh drastic changes right now. Because of the effect of the overlay fund. So they are going to make some severe changes. Because you can get the senior means tested exemption, you could be eligible for a senior work off abatement. You could be possibly eligible for a veterans exemption. You could also possibly be eligible for a statutory um elderly exemption. So uh there is a lot that um that there you can help elderly people with.
Mm hmm.
And I think that after this year, when it was very difficult to get the answers, though, from the Department of Revenue. Because of the confidentiality about anyone's tax returns. So it was very hard to even get the hundred and ten residents in the hut, at least as a number. Uh those people, though, are the ones who would be eligible. I mean, they can apply. Anyone else who applies, they have to have bring in the circuit breaker that they would have gotten. So that's their eligibility.
And and you're planning on composing an article for consideration?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll put it forward to you for, you know, December, January during the budget season. Along with the veterans, there's a new um veterans exemption that has a choice of either a percent increase. Or a flat amount. And so those, and I'm working with John Lazar with that. The veterans agent.
I don't have any more questions on the senior means exemption.
Dean, do you? I know I was confused too last year.
On what?
On the senior means tested exemption. I knew it had to do with the circuit breaker, but that was all I knew.
Well, you've you've certainly picked up on it. How's it? How would this get rolled out to residents?
Well, what would happen is um. Right now, the various communities that have adopted it legislatively, they are now going to go to town meeting. And then adopt it the same way we're going to adopt it.
Okay.
And the state's gonna have to create one of their state for application forms. They have to have that ready because we are a semi-annual community, they're gonna have to have that ready by next April. Because I'm gonna have to have all of the applications in, I think by August first. So that any exemption will be applied directly to the first half tax bill. So like I can, I will be adding utility liens to the tax commitment tomorrow. After you all vote on um that. Um I will then also have to make the deductions for the senior means tested exemption. So that would be on the first, the on the commitment itself.
Is is a lot of this copying what other communities are doing?
I think the state did, yes. The state actually, when they enacted the law, they went ahead and copied a lot. And took what they thought was the best from all the various different.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah. So this would be more standardized than everybody, every community having something different.
Yep. Sheila, should it get approved at the late May annual town meeting? And then it's gonna go to the attorney general for approval, I'm sure.
Right.
So that might bring you to June. Are you concerned about the timing with that?
Well, I am a little, but I still, I don't see where it would be um not approved per se. Um these are the that gave us the law um in the HERO Act. I'm gonna be taking, I'm going to the class, ma- mass municipal, uh what's new in municipal law. So I'm gonna be doing that in October. So I'll know a lot more by then, you know? And again, I'm not gonna have to create an application. All these other communities have made up applications, and some are better than others. You know, so this, it has to be standardized and um, you know, it'll be easier to work with. But the applicants will be filing early and then, you know, have to be approved by the board of assessors before the commitment's committed.
Thank you.
And then the next is open space discount. And the town of Nahat does not have open space that's classified as open space. Um then then the very last thing is um. Uh right now, the the tax rate is going to be nine dollars and fifteen cents. And our excess levy capacity is expected to be eight thousand seven hundred sixty seven dollars and twenty cents. And I do have figures on the sheet from last year and the year before.
Sheila, for for those that are listening in that might not be familiar with excess tax. Uh the excess levy capacity, could you give a?
Sure.
Short um brief explanation?
Yes, so um in order to determine what the excess levy capacity is, the first thing that we do is we start with what's called the levy limit. And the levy limit is uh the prior year levy that we um raised and appropriated last year. We add two and a half percent, we're gonna add our new growth. Our new growth this year was seventy nine thousand one hundred twenty six dollars. So that brings us to the subtotal of ten million seven hundred twenty two thousand nine hundred and forty seven dollars. Um so that's where we're gonna be starting. And we continue and we come to um eleven thousand, eleven million sixty six dollars and two hundred and eighty seven dollars. The actual, sorry, levy limit for twenty twenty five. Then we're gonna add our debt exclusion, and then we're gonna do the water and sewer shift. So our levy now is twelve million nine hundred thirty eight thousand six hundred and thirty six dollars. But we're shy that eight thousand that I said, seven hundred. Sixty seven dollars and twenty cents, so we're not raising it to that amount, it's that amount less. And it's a calculation between the overlay fund on page two of the tax recap. And page three of the estimated receipts, it's a mathematic- mathematical equation. That you you just can't get it to zero.
Right.
Just can't.
So we couldn't, we couldn't raise the tax rate another cent.
Right.
Without exceeding that.
Doing something.
Capacity.
That's right, and then we change the levy and we wouldn't be able to get a tax rate set.
Uh on the other hand, um. You know, we're raising it as much as we possibly can, we're not leaving anything on the table. So i- in some towns, uh they have the ability to leave more on the table. Uh mostly because they have a commercial tax base that supplements their revenue. Uh and other and other means. Uh but in the hut, uh we've traditionally gone to, you know, our max capacity level. Um because we're primarily residential.
Right. Exactly. So the next um thing on the agenda, if you want, if there's anything else to discuss, um.
Should we, should we read the motion and then open it up for residents?
Yes, for comments, sure.
That makes sense, so um.
Yes.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve a residential factor of one and not adopt the following. A resident, excuse me, a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption. A senior means tested ex- exemption and not granted discount for open space for fiscal year twenty twenty five. And that the assessors have informed the board that the excess levy capacity for the current fiscal year is calculated as. Eight thousand seven hundred sixty seven dollars and twenty cents. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, so um this is a hearing. So if there are, if there is anyone on, well, on either board or on the call. That has any comments or questions, this is your moment.
Please remind me why we tax residential, commercial, industrial at the same rate?
You wanna know why we set it at the same rate?
I do.
Yeah, because ninety, almost ninety seven percent or a little more than ninety seven percent is residential. And your commercial, industrial, and personal property make up two point six percent, two point five percent. So shifting the um tax burden from ninety six or ninety seven percent of your tax bills. Onto less than three percent of the tax bills would be in a um. A huge amount for the residents to gain a little amount. There's because of the number of bills and um.
Yeah.
And the number of residents.
I'll I'll add to that, too, uh you know, commercial, commercial activity in the hut is so hard to make work as it is. Because we're not a throughway community and um, you know, being able to try to support those businesses as best we can. By uh keeping it at the same rate, uh you know, helps a little bit versus shifting, as Sheila said. You know, the the benefit that the residents, the residential properties gain is so minimal. Ver- compared to the significant increase that would be applied to the the very little commercial properties in town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff Lewis, um you wanna unmute yourself?
Um can you hear me?
Yes.
The um new construction number you gave was a little over seventy nine.
Can you start with your name and address, please?
Sorry, yes, name Jeffrey Lewis, I live at six Elsworth Road here in the hut. And probably a dumb question, but the the seventy nine thousand is new construction. And my limited knowledge, that's a a factor of the assessed value?
Um no, it's not a factor, Jeff, um it is actually um new accounts, new accounts in personal property. New accounts if there's commercial, um in a commercial property, if there's new fixtures, um inventory, et cetera. Anything new from the prior year, that becomes new growth. Um additions, um new homes that have been torn down and rebuilt, um. Porches, driveways, added um bathrooms, added bedrooms. And second floor additions, even driveways and patios, pools.
Do you get, you get a report? You get a report or the assessors office gets a report from the.
I get the building.
Services department to understand what new construction has occurred over the past year.
And that new construction is the assessed value? Or a a guesstimate of how much the value of the new construction is times last year's tax rate?
Uh yes, yes.
And how, could you, could you help me understand how is la- the value?
I don't add value for this year's value, it has to stay in last year's value. So whatever the addition adds into it, that's the only portion I pick up with last year's tax rate.
If I put on a new floor, how would you determine the value of that second floor that I put on my house?
Well, I would sketch it and then I would add the square footage to the property record card and I'd hit calculate. And so the difference under the same basis would be the new growth.
So there must be some standard to determine that that. You know, square footage is, say, an extra one thousand square foot times some number to give me.
Well, it would be in your, on your property record card, you, you know, you're first starting off with. Every little detail on the, your property record card has a cost associated with it. So as it's changed and and additions are added, it just gets multiplied then. By the new addition.
Right, so but if, alright. Is, and the the book of original entry is that website that we have. Which shows our, um if you wanted to get a, submit a building permit, you'd have to go through a process online. And somebody, it it gets through different stages of submitted, approved, and so forth. And some value is established to it.
Oh, no, 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 I don't do it like that, no, no, absolutely not. I don't use any value that you use on your building permit, it is then inspected, okay? So it's just measured and inspected and just, it's just added to your property record card and it, and all we do is hit calculate. Because I'm not changing any of the cost tables.
Okay, so there is an established cost table then?
Oh, yes, yes, Marshall and Swift.
Is it? Is it the same is a, you know, is a thousand square feet? Uh inland, the same as a thousand square foot feet on the coast?
It depends if you have a cape, a ranch.
Right, so it's.
A bungalow, it's just all the style homes and whether the style changes, yes.
So there's a lot of.
The effect, there's a lot, so not any one thing.
Does that help answer your question, Jeff?
Yeah, it does, uh I was trying to determine whether there was some standard value where you could sit back and 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 go and instead of guessing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not guessing.
Well, this, we allow X amount of dollars for this thing, Y mu- a number of dollars for this thing, so that everybody's using the same book. Um to calculate that number.
Yeah.
Okay, thank.
Yeah, I I I use Marshall and Swift, though.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Marshall and Swift.
Marshall.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Insurance companies, you have um, Rob, did you used to use uh Marshall and Swift or something else?
Uh Marshall and Swift, yeah, but that's not the name of the company anymore, I'm trying to remember what it is.
That's, yeah, just changed, yeah.
It might be Beck or something like that.
Right. Yeah, like my um software company has changed names too, got solved, but I keep calling it the old name, sorry.
Might be CoreLogic.
CoreLogic, that's it, CoreLogic, thank you, Ted. Yeah. Anything else, Jeff?
No, thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay. And if you wanna come in and I'll go over the, you know, your property record card and you can see, you know, how it gets um. Um how the value can change if I change your um, anything on your property record card.
Thank you, always walking by the town hall, love stopping in.
That's good.
Hmm, any other discussion or any questions from? The Zoom participants? Alright, um hearing and seeing none, board of selectmen roll call vote on the motion?
Shane Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbey, aye.
Josh Anfrimai.
You're a aye.
I'm Deborah, aye.
Ted Karski, aye.
Okay, then I think now that ends and concludes the board of assessors. Um I know that you all have other work, I think, scheduled for this evening. So the board can vote to adjourn their meeting, I think.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I move that the board of selectmen and board of assessors close the F Y twenty twenty five tax classification hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Shane Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbey, aye.
Josh Anfrimai.
David, aye, aye.
Catherine Gerber, aye.
Ted Karski, aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tony, too.
Thank you, thank you, Sheila.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheila.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Board of Assessors.
Yes. Great.
Take care. Alright, so. We have the liens thing. Just a moment for the agenda.
Have a motion?
Okay. Go ahead.
Mister Chairman, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve committing to the board of assessors unpaid F Y twenty four unpaid utility and rubbish accounts. And the amount of, and Tony, is it one twenty five, seven oh seven ninety?
Uh one twenty nine, seven oh seven ninety.
Yep, okay, one twenty nine, seven oh seven ninety. As presented by the co- treasurer collector to be added to the annual taxes and municipal charges lien to be subject to the provisions of the law relative to interest on taxes.
Second.
Okay, so this is um. Um unpaid water, sewer, trash, bills. Uh along with some associated interest.
Yeah, so we uh we sent out late bills to all residents that were on this list. Um about a month ago, you know, with a. A uh unique colored piece of paper to jump out at them when they opened the, opened the envelope. Uh identifying that they had a late bill. Uh our treasurer collector's office uh. Has been working pretty hard over the last couple of weeks, um communicating with folks that have been on this list, trying to uh narrow it down. And stayed open late today uh for anyone that, you know, came into the town hall. So that's why you got the number uh just before the meeting started. Uh to give people that opportunity to come in and pay whatever um. Unpaid amount that they may have, might have had. Um as as far as how this compares to previous years. Uh in fiscal year twenty two, it was ninety thousand three hundred and seventy one dollars and twenty cents. In fiscal year twenty three, it was a hundred and five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents. Uh so it went up about fifteen grand from F Y twenty two to F Y twenty three. And we're at almost one thirty tonight, so it's, you know, gone up about twenty five from last year. Uh some of that has to do with the increased amount of rates, you know, the increase in the rates uh from year to year. Doesn't necessarily mean um, you know, that there's a lot more people or there's a lot more properties. Or um a lot more usage. It, a lot of that is probably accounted to the increase in rates compared to previous uh fiscal years.
Oh roughly fifteen percent over last year.
Mister Chairman, uh we closed out the joint meeting, did we reopen or open this portion of the meeting?
Well, we're, we're still open as a board per my initial proclamation beginning of the meeting.
Okay, we're fine, we're fine.
Yeah, um so aside from uh colored mail, is there, is there any other, any other reminders for these people?
Um. It's, it's a. It's a funny line to to kind of tiptoe, uh we try to do, you know, we try to kind of um. Manage the flow of people. Manage the flow of people uh coming into the town hall and also getting to the people who have unpaid bills. Uh, in years past where we've done, you know, townwide notification of um. Unpaid, you know, uh. That liens are coming up, it can cause a massive flow of residents coming into the town hall. Uh, checking to see if they have any unpaid bills. Uh, so we try to do more direct contact with the residents who actually have unpaid bills versus. You know, a massive publication.
So there's a hundred and twenty one uh properties listed here. So less than ten percent, a lot less than ten percent of our. Houses, I guess, housing units. Well, um, I don't have anything much more to add, actually something we go through every year, I guess we. The amount of growth is. Um, not nothing, but um. Just wondering, I guess we should think about if there's some way we can. Provide more incentive for these people to pay their tax, uh their bills on time, not, I don't have any ideas, honestly, but uh. You know, just to sort of. If we can reverse the trend, that'd be nice. Uh, without, without offering any solutions.
Tony, how many, how many uh follow-ups do we issue uh on on trash and and such?
Well, so trash, you know, your utility bill is billed three times a year. If you uh had any unpaid amount last fiscal year, it was leaned to your home and then. Paid through your uh real estate tax, usually through an escrow account if you have a mortgage. And so your first bill of the new cycle, which goes out next week, uh. Would almost, it's almost like a clean slate. Uh, then your second bill that comes out in January, if you have any unpaid amount, it's gonna show an arrear. You know, arrears on the bill, and then the th- third bill, same thing. And then if after the, you know, then shortly after the fiscal year closes in June. Uh, we'll send out late bills in July, saying, you know, you're uh, this is how much you owe. Uh, so. It kind of depends on when you, it depends on when you uh. Accrue the arreared amount. If it's, if it starts from the first bill, you're getting four, or I'm sorry, three reminders that there's an unpaid amount. If it isn't to your last bill, you're, you know, you're getting it one time with the late bill that we send out.
Okay, so I guess my, my question would focus, let's say on the first bill, uh there is no. Follow up three weeks after the 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 due date uh passes uh with with a, you know, a different colored. I've seen him, but uh we're not doing that anymore?
No, not typically, not earlier on in the season, uh we just add it as, it's just added as an arrear for your next bill cycle.
For the following, okay.
Yep. Yep.
And um anybody that's on this list has, uh the lien goes into effect September thirtieth, right, so if. If the bills were paid before then, the lien doesn't go into effect, is that, is that correct?
Uh, no, that as you vote on it tonight, it goes into effect, so if someone comes in. To pay an outstanding amount tomorrow, we would say to them, uh, you know, don't pay us. Deposit it into your escrow account and uh include it in your first real estate bill.
I I guess my concern uh uh is relating to my question, Tony, is that uh, you know, somebody gets a bill for. I don't know, three hundred dollars or four hundred dollars or something like that on that first bill. And they're saying, oh my gosh, you know, I didn't set that aside right now and and, you know, a couple of weeks pass and. Uh, yeah, the money still isn't there and. Maybe drifts off and then they get that second bill and it's like, oh my God, it just doubled, now, now I have no chance of coming up with that and and I. I I I'm just wondering about, again, focusing in on that first one, should we be sending out a reminder notice a couple of weeks after the due date passes?
Um. It becomes, it becomes actually like almost more confusing because. Of the bill cycle itself, uh and you have to give them thirty days. To come in and pay their bill, so if you then run a report after that point. Uh, to send out a late bill, I think we've, we've done it in the past, um. Most of the time, though, it's not much of a difference maker.
Okay.
Uh. You know, more so. I'll leave it at that, it's not much of a difference maker, we've, we've put that effort in before, uh but, but that being said, you know, we're usually in. We usually have pretty good communication with those who are in a position as the example as you provided. People that are in that position, we work with on, you know. Uh, trying to figure out a way, our treasure collector's office is, is really good at trying to figure out a way to get them caught up. Uh, to limit interest and to put them on a plan that, you know, brings them uh to current. But, but a lot of that, you know, is initiated by the resident. Uh, so, you know, I, I've. I think, you know, whether, whether positive or negative, I think, you know, some, some folks. Don't mind it coming out of the escrow account at the end of the year and, and turning over the new leaf.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion from the board before uh we answer Jeff Lewis's question?
Jeff Lewis, six Elsworth Road in the heart, it it's a what-if question. Uh, did I hear correctly, you said there were a hundred and some odd individual accounts? Hundred and twelve, was it?
Hundred and twenty one.
One twenty one, do we, do we know whether there are any re- repeats from prior year? For instance, are the first one hundred, the same one hundred that were here a year ago, but only twelve new add-ons? Question number one, number two, a what-if question. This gets added on to next year's tax bill, which goes out to the bank. Uh, just becomes a part of the PIT number, uh property, you know, principal interest in taxes. Um, and now all of a sudden, whatever's coming from trash sewer. Or whatever not getting paid ends up on the tax bill, um and becomes part of the annual tax deduction. So is some people using it as a, as a means of financing additional property taxes? Just a what-if.
Well, the answer, the answer to your first question is yes, uh, we do know and. Uh, I, you know, to your second point. People may, or, you know, I'm not really, I'm not sure, you know, how that, how the folks on the list. Are divided up of those who are doing it intentionally versus not.
My only reason for bringing up it, it may be seen as a problem by the town, but it's seen as an opportunity. Um, on the other end, so a problem that you're not gonna be able to fix.
So Jeff, um, so I understood your, so I understand your second question, are you suggesting that maybe some people choose to put it on their tax bill? Which is deductible on their taxes and and therefore they get a larger deduction?
It just becomes an ordinary.
Yeah.
You're not case semi annual tax bill.
And that is capped, how much you can deduct.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, you know, we, we don't wanna encourage uh that.
Well, hesitating whether I should even bring this up.
Yeah, uh, well, one thing to remember is there is, there is interest applied to your bill, um which of course would. Um. Also get reflected on your tax, on your real estate tax bill, but um, I'm not sure the. I I wonder if the math winds up being beneficial. You, you know what I mean, cuz you're not deduct, you're, you're not getting hundred percent. Uh, you, you, you still have to pay taxes, just deducting that amount, and so your deduction is a little bigger, but. Does the interest offset the bigger deduction? Not sure.
Yeah, uh, just, I think this is the last time I'll raise my hand. It was just a what-if question, you know, that uh it's just a fact of life that it's not gonna go away. But unknown. With that, I'll, I guess I'll sign off.
Well, thank, thanks, Jeff.
Definitely, two interesting questions. Um, alright, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, uh, roll call vote on the motion, as Brad.
Shane Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbey.
Josh Anfermae, I believe that is the last thing on our agenda. Um, so with that, I will. Intertain a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Shane Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbey.
Josh Anfermae, everyone, thanks.
Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night, guys.
Good night.